Eric.
James.
Eric.
Williams.
Yeah.
Uh, that directory also shows that trustee Benson, uh, reason for not being here is because of the fact that, uh, this meeting was not posted for the, uh, forty-eight hour notice. So that was his reason for not being here. I also have some concern because there should be a forty-eight hour notice, uh, given to the public for special meeting, and this is not any emergency meeting.
Mr. Mayor, the notice was actually posted in the village hall at five o'clock on Friday, as well as at the library at eight o'clock P M. on Friday night. Uh, specialty notices were sent to the mayor, uh, village manager, and all of the trustees by email, and placing their boxes in the library on Friday.
I'm just looking at what I received here in my box and this, and this statement called it for a special meeting. It doesn't have any two date and time that this meeting will be, uh...
January thirteenth, two thousand twelve, as of now, and stop those notices to be sent. Special meeting notice was sent by the attorneys prior to being posted.
Okay, let's move to number two. Motion to rescind the layoff of police officers.
Mr. Mayor, may I motion to rescind the layoff of the two police officers?
Second. Comments? I'm Rick Paul Rowe.
Johnson, Burgess.
Yes.
Chavis.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Williams. Yeah.
That type of judgment, motion to dismiss the village manager, assumed to be paragraph seven of the contract.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to terminate the services of the village manager pursuant to paragraph number seven for no cause, and termination is strictly for financial reasons.
Second. Comments?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, we know that the laying off the officer was to supplement the date for Chief Fox, and since we rescinded that, it's a legitimate that, um, we know that they have to pay the chief due to the, um, courts ruling, so this is strictly for financial reasons.
Well, I need to say, we, we've been through this before with the village being without someone handling the day-to-day operation of the village, and we know what confusion and what that calls the village, and for us now to hire, if the board to hire a village manager to, uh, to help move our village in the right direction, and now to come up and say that we are going to terminate her service because of, uh, uh, finances. You, you asked her, and I asked the village manager to provide, uh, alternative reasons why we can still pay the chief of police, and, and those things that she provided to the village, to the, to the board of trustees, and the board really didn't even, uh, take in consideration what she had provided to them. It was all about, uh, laying off somebody when you knew, first of all, that that was bad judgment on the, uh, trustee's part, uh, for them to even consider laying off police officers at the time when we are having crime going through the roof, at the time when we are having, uh, home burglaries up, and we got the summer coming, and then for them to consider laying off police officers, that was very bad judgment on their, uh, uh, part. And I think the same thing goes now for, for a village to be without a village manager, again, is bad judgment on the trustee's, uh, part.
That goes second. I'm Rick Paul Rowe.
Johnson, Burgess.
No.
Chavis.
Under the circumstances, I think we have to, due to the fact that we're, we're in a budget crisis, we gotta stay in the budget, so I'm not to vote this.
James.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Williams. No. Three yeses and two noes. I want to ask.
The, the motion, uh, did pass, but I also want to read an executive order, uh, so it could go into effect. I may or will start with a rare thought, village, due hereby issued with all, all executive order that I have exercised in my statutory authority to appoint the office of the village manager, Ms. uh, Henryetta Turner, Turner, as village manager. I do hereby direct all such action in effect immediately, February thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, as far as to succeed any other previous order or directive in conflict. This executive order shall take into effect immediately, and shall remain in effect until such character has the data to say it.
Mr., Mr. Mayor, um, first of all, uh, pursuant to paragraph number seven, the village manager, uh, agreement, she was still working for the next thirty days, uh, but the notice is to be issued by the attorney tomorrow. We know that you do not have the power for an executive order for this, uh, type, and according to village ordinance, the only individuals that hire a village manager, uh, is the board of trustees, there is no warrants in place. So, Mr. Mayor, uh, the, the terminations are directed due to the fact that motion did carry to issue the, um, thirty-day written notice based on paragraph verse seven, which says either the village or the village manager may terminate this agreement for any reason by giving a thirty-day written notice to the other party prior to termination with no separation compensation. Uh, that letter is to move forward by the village attorneys.
Still, my executive order stands, I want to appoint Ms. Turner.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for the village attorney to give, uh, some type of explanation on what powers does the mayor have giving executive orders? I'm asking the village attorney, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, in response to the trustee's, uh, question, we had, uh, looked into this previously as far as executive order, uh, of the mayor, and while executive orders can be issued in certain, certain circumstances, uh, that authority has to be given by the, by the corporate authorities through the passage of the ordinance, and what I looked at before, I'm not aware of any ordinance that's ever been passed in this village to authorize executive orders. I could be wrong, uh, I just not aware of any ordinances.
However, the attorney certainly has our input for this, and your district ordinance is where I wrote that I asked the mayor to give an executive order.
Then, then that directory still, it would be back and forth, but not because I'd be asking the judge to rule on it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, just so you realize, what this action that this board took tonight was strictly by the contract, and, um, again, uh, it's for financial reasons, so, again, if you want to put this village in more liability, it's up to you, uh, and your lawsuits are already in excess of about thirty thousand dollars, so, um, continue to cost the taxpayers money.
The board is the one who continues to cost taxpayer money because of the attorney on the last lawsuit plea, to state to the board that this, uh, ordinance will not hold up in court, please do not go to court, you're gonna cause the taxpayer money, but on full extent of this board decision to continue to go and, and use the taxpayer money to fight, uh, my court decision, there was no reason for us to be going to court on it, that, that the listener, listen to your own attorney, if, if the village is your attorney, if we are here to advise us on you. So, it's the board is the one that's, uh, spending the taxpayer money on my...
My next question, since we do have the terms here, is there anything along with the motion that was meant to make, and is it according to the contract, Mr. Attorney?
It's a proper motion, and the, uh, the contract says, uh, the separation was thirty minutes based on the village or, uh, the village manager.
And I think for the, for the residents to realize, we would not be in this position if it was not for the mayor, uh, appointing a position that was not part of the, um, budget, that was not budgeted for or appropriated for. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, we offset from budget hearings, if you were planning on making additional headcount to the village, you should have, uh, made those arrangements and worked with the board to figure out whether to come up with additional funds before any additional headcount on, so we would not be here tonight, but it saddens me that we are. However, uh, there's a position that's in this village that was not budgeted for, that was not allocated for, uh, and we have to go pay that in the ledger.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Have you personally, in the amount of money that you want to pay the police chief, have you came up with that amount of money, or have you been a front chair?
Yeah. On, on the last, uh, meeting we had, the village manager gave the board direction that where the money can be found, uh, and I, I, and you know, it really baffled me that this board would not look at the idea that the, the police department is spending taxpayer money, uh, in the excess of three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year overtime, and one person, that, 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 that just, it just throws me for a look that the board would not pay any attention to this, and, and, you know, and, and, and think that's, it's okay, you know, and that's one of the things that not only this, uh, the, the, the current village manager pointed out, but that's one of the things that the interim village manager who was, uh, was here before had pointed out, and, and that's one of the things that the finance director has pointed out, and for the board to close their eyes to this, you know, and, and, you know, I, I don't understand why is it that even the citizen is not, uh, upset about it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, and either the trustee jumped in, but when we looked at the last few months, or the time that it got down, we asked the police chief to please give us a breakdown of his entire, uh, different type of program that he can bring in, what he plans to do to get the additional money, we still haven't got that, we asked him for several times, and when the finance director spoke last week, I do believe he said that we usually can get a little more money than, than about three percent over. Well, there's no guarantee. We, I said, Put County is scraping the bottom like we're scraping, and I don't think we're gonna get any extra, all the other towns around haven't got any extra, and he, he couldn't guarantee that extra three percent, but that, without that extra three percent, then we'll begin to bind, and we're, we're gonna catch the village again. But, Mr. Mayor, I, I can't see where you say that, uh, overtime has dropped, until we get some paperwork and time to show us that it completely has, uh, went down below the current rate of fine and damage. Uh, we, we, we need to reevaluate the whole thing in thirty days, fine, we will reevaluate the whole thing in thirty days, but at present time, nothing has happened. We need something to happen now, because you, the law said we gotta have a police chief, and you put him on at a certain figure, and that's it, so we gotta come up with some money somewhere, but we can't go without police chief, and you brought him on board, and we have to pay him a salary.
Trustee, I have a big part of the three percent, there's always been a pattern of this, uh, village, that we were, that's why the finance director, uh, stated that the three percent, because we've always got three percent over the, uh, the money that was allocated for the taxes, that's where he got, got the numbers from, so there's always been a pattern of that, uh, that we forget three percent over budget.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, that, that we have always, nothing said, or no, or anything that we're gonna get this time, until we have something that is concrete, that we can't really count anything.
Trustee.
This, this is a lot of stuff.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna clear, clarify a couple things that you stated, and I don't know why you make this particular statement, because this is something that you've been mayor for almost three years now, and to say this board did not recognize the overtime, when overtime is posted, or when it is paid out, I'm sure you get a copy of how much overtime is paid out over a period of time, and to say this board didn't do anything about that, that's like trying to, you know, turn a corner and peep around the corner saying it's somebody else's fault. You're the mayor, you invoke, or you tried to invoke executive orders, like you're trying to do here, if you saw the overtime is in an excess amount, you could invoke anything that said overtime until it comes past your desk at that time, but to come here now, after a year's time, and said that overtime is in an excess, in an excess, and it was the board's fault, you're misleading people, because that's not true, sir. You get the same reports we do, and you, you've intervened before for less than, now to come here now and say that this board allowed that overtime, that is wrong. You signed the checks, believe me, I know, you signed the checks, you signed the overtime, I'm sure, like you said before, you stopped signing, you didn't sign two checks because you thought there was a discrepancy on just two checks out of the forty-two you signed that day. So if you saw an excess amount of overtime, it was, should've came to some kind of conclusion that, wait a minute, why am I paying this particular person all this money, and look at the ledger to see how much money is being paid, because it's, it's, it's divided in regular and overtime time each and every pay period. If you saw an excess amount, there hasn't been a time at that time to say, wait a minute, before I signed this check, let me find out what's going on, but to make that statement that the board okayed the overtime, we don't okay anything. We don't okay the overtime. We look at, uh, the, uh, accounts payable, we don't see the payroll like you do because you signed the checks, so to say that we had to do that, that's wrong, sir, and I wish you would stop misleading the people, letting them know that we did this and we did that. Now, as far as anything else is concerned, that's why I was, I was quiet, because I made my vote, and I voted my conscience, but to mislead people and make them think that this board misled people, we, we allowed overtime to be, to be charged at a high rate and didn't do anything about it, sir, as I stated before, three years, you were here, you get, you get the payroll, um, ledger, we don't, we just get accounts payable, and on accounts payable, it does not have, uh, salaries on that, unless we specifically ask for that, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I need to say, maybe you don't get the, but I brought it to you, the board the attention when I first got elected, that there was something wrong with the overtime. I have been echoing this ever since I've been elected. I even asked the, 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 the chief of police for the schedule, asked the chief of police for the, the, uh, uh, time swipe, the board did not back me up, I went to a foyer and asked the, uh, uh, the, uh, chief of police, uh, interim chief of police, the board told me I should have done that, and it, it's, they hear the same that you didn't know anything about the overtime, sir, I'm telling you, you were wrong, you should know about this overtime.
Your chief of police.
Everybody knew about this overtime. I've been echoing this overtime ever since I've been sitting in this seat, and it hasn't , uh, supported me on doing anything.
Your chief of police, sir, at the time, was not the chief, the interim chief of police. When you became mayor, the chief of police at that time was LaHeta. After that happened, it was Frank Martin, so I guess there was overtime at that time. There was overtime at that time, I guess overtime started when the interim chief of police came in, and that's when you claimed that we, as a board, would not go along with that. We, as far as overtime, sir, if you, you can, now that's one order you can, uh, enact, and that's stopping all overtime until it comes past you, you can do that, that's an order that you can as chief executive officer of the village, there's no overtime unless it's okayed by the mayor. Yes, sir, you can do that, check your recs, check the lawyer, you're sitting right there, you can do that, these other executive orders, I don't understand that, but you can't stop all overtime unless it's specifically directed by yourself. That order you can't do, you didn't need the board for that, sir, you could've stopped that yourself, right then and there, when you felt and you saw that that order, or that, that overtime was an excess amount, you could've stopped it, you didn't need the board, like you don't need the board now when you said you wanna do an executive order, you said that I don't need the board to do this or that, so don't make it like it's the board, don't do that, sir, because, I mean, anybody can see that, your lawyer's sitting right there next to you, you could stop the overtime, you signed the checks, like you stopped signing the checks, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, just so we are on the same page, granted, we came on board, uh, overtime was around three hundred thousand dollars, however, every budget year since we have, uh, tried to drop the overtime, that is why last year it was less than three hundred thousand dollars in overtime, this year's budget was for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in overtime, uh, so the village board has been trying to cut back on the overtime, however, just so the residents understand, compared to a year ago, the last three months, let's look at November two thousand ten, overtime for the police department was eleven thousand eight hundred dollars, in November two thousand eleven, it was twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars with some change, in December two thousand ten, overtime was eleven thousand eight hundred dollars, uh, and, and a little bit excess, December two thousand eleven, overtime was twenty-three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars with some change, January two thousand eleven, twelve months, was fourteen thousand six hundred, January two thousand twelve was eighteen thousand five hundred. So, Mr. Mayor, the overtime has not gone down in the last three months, the overtime has increased, think about this, we have a budget of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for overtime alone, so far in the first three months of our budget year, in overtime for the police department, we have spent sixty-seven thousand four hundred dollars, uh, and, and some change. So, so, Mr. Mayor, uh, I think that to say that overtime has gone down, has not gone down, Mr. Mayor, the overtime has increased, uh, again, some of the things that we looked at about, uh, changing budget line items to, uh, to get additional funds, one of those was reducing the budget of, um, the, um, the item for overtime, was reducing it by seventy thousand dollars, Mr. Mayor, we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget by reducing it by, by seventy thousand, but it took it down to a hundred and ten thousand dollars, we have already spent sixty-seven thousand plus. So, Mr. Mayor, again, this board, we have a financial responsibility to the residents, we also have a responsibility to look at, and this, this village board did look at everything, uh, to say that we just ignored it, we didn't, we sat back in the executive session for how many hours, going point by point, trying to figure out if we could actually do it. So, Mr. Mayor, don't, don't mislead the residents, all right, there's a lot of thought into this, um, again, it was looking at ways to pay for an individual that you appointed, and, um, again, an individual that you had planned on appointing should have been discussed during budget hearings, we sat through three budget hearings inside this room, going point by point, Mr. Mayor, it was brought up because you even responded to it, that the police budget did not include bringing on an outside police, uh, police chief, and you even responded, your exact words, I don't remember exact words, but you, you questioned it, there's nothing in this budget, and it was, yes, there's nothing in this budget, if we have to, we can go back to the tapes, if it needs refreshing of your memory, it was talked about it before you even brought it in. So, uh, again, this is a financial, um, strictly financial, on, on why we're doing this, this is because of, um, something that you did, Mr. Mayor.
Commander, in the midst of overtime for the police department, that's six months after I'm on. That relates to the overtime for the police department on the sixty-six thousand dollars for the month of November or December, we have grantly that's returned to us, which I believe is half of that, and overtime that was spent for roadside safety, the D U I checks, that's program to the state of the money that those money, and I'm sure the trustee knows that, that those money is given, a check is really backed to the village for that, I believe it's roughly around thirty-two or thirty-four thousand dollars, and I'm sure the trustee knows that, because that program has been placed before, so that's weird information right there, that, that we, that, that all of that money was based on this, that said on overtime, because we had those programs on, are you sure, so, you can look that up because the check, Mr. Mohan, on that money being returned, there's no mistake for those programs.
Mr. Mayor. Got a question, um, how many officers down are we right now? How many officers are we supposed to have on staff? In other words, how many are we down, is it like six? About six, it's six, how many do we have on injured? Yeah, how many are on injured?
Well, we have one on, one out on light duty and one out on injury, that's it.
Okay, so we got two officers down, and in total, eight were out, right? So on staff...
I don't know, uh, the, the number eight, I don't know where you guys have, I don't know if your, your operating manpower or officers over the thirty-two, if that's the case, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I know, I haven't seen that written down, you know, it says, I don't understand, for the police department, for the police department.
Well, I know at one time we had.
I can't think when I wasn't here.
Well, I've lived here that long.
I can't think when I wasn't here, but I think, there's nothing that, in the, that's in the contract to say that you have to do a lot of the, the manpower, because if there was, I guarantee you one thing, the union would hold your feet to the fire on that, make you have those thirty-two officers.
But you got two officers on injured leave right now, right?
We got, we got one on light duty and one on injury.
One on light duty, one on injury, so light duty can't get overtime, correct? Okay, um, if you got two officers down, we should've been staffed with thirty-two, um, with six days, sick days and vacations, I mean, how are you not, with all the years of experience these officers have in Saw Village, the dedication and time that they put of years of service, the, uh, hours that they're owed for vacation time, who covers that but overtime officers? I mean, you, you can't sit here and say that the overtime's gonna go down, there's gonna be homicides, there's, there's gonna be D U Is, which cause overtime, uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure, uh, there's many things on the street that the officers gotta complete, and it's gonna be rightfully so, that that's why the overtime's gonna be caused, especially when you're down officers. So to try to sit here and, and think that officers are going to just not work overtime because we have the right manpower, one, we're not starting off with the right manpower, two, we got one on light duty, ones off on injury, so who covers that? Can't get no volunteers, it's gotta be paid officers, it's gonna be overtime, it's gonna be time out, and if they go on vacation because they're old, who covers that?
First of all, uh, can, can you hear me, uh, one of the problems you have in those departments, there's been no checks and dollars on how overtime's going to be given, there's no way, you know, that overtime's going to be given out without anyone signing off, that's number one, and two, you have enough staff, but the problem that you have is that you have a, or the contract, have you removed the contract of the police department?
Just, uh, briefly.
Okay, the contract of the police department calls for a service that's seven minimum staff, that has been changed, and without negotiation with management, that's what has been changed in the police department, and, uh, they have increased the number of manpower on all three shifts, well, in turn, the management's gonna make it up overtime because we have changed the wording in the contract that is binding by both sides, but next door here, for this board, apparently unknown to them, or blind, or turned a blind eye, never had paid attention that the overtime, that the, that the minimum staffing has been changed.
Okay, explain.
Now, hold on, let me finish, you have things that are being given that are not part of the contract at all, where you have, there's in excess, I think, Mr. Mohan said, of almost fifty thousand dollars of money that's been paid out to personnel that's not even budgeted in the contract, that's a line that, that definitely should not be, if we 're gonna, if the contract is there, we can bring down, should be held to, that's how you buy management.
What, what amount does that equal up to?
About fifty thousand dollars, though, but, but management-wise, you manage, you're correct, overtime is gonna be in the police department, good solid arrest, I'm not having no, when you, when the guy has made good arrests and go to court, they're gonna get overtime because we're getting a bag off the street, it's when you have that overtime that's just open wide, literally, you have no idea why this officer had twenty dollars overtime, puts no, no checks and dollars, no one signs off on it, officer just had twenty dollars overtime, and so then, then you go back and you pay that, but you have no checks and dollars, you cannot run the police department, uh, any, any department, hey, this was mom and pops grocery store, you have to have checks and dollars and accountability set in place, you don't have it, that's one of the reasons why the police department is running away from you, if you ask.
What is given to them, that's fifty thousand?
You have...
Because I know they're in uniform.
Well, no, again, that's the board on the uniform thing. Because as I told, and as you knew, I hear so many people say, the police department is my baby. Y'all love the police departments. But not one time, not until myself and this attorney got here, have we turned around and went and talked to get the guys the uniform, the uniform allowance, so they can go by uniform. And that's because the board never opened up that for the uniform. And that was wrong, and we both corrected that from the beginning. And I told the union, and also here is all the union reps, from the beginning, I got to the first thing, I thought, oh, big city had it. Because a policeman is just like a marine in full dress uniform. You don't have to open your mouth.
Answer the question.
Let me finish, sir. Just standing in a full dress commands respect by itself. And I, from the beginning, I talked to you and I first mentioned, I told you that the guys must look a certain way in their uniform. But I'm not going to look any different in mine, and we got a bunch of good looking policemen.
Yeah, time for a chief on that. But my question still is, who covers the overtime?
Though, by the magic of the schedule, we cover the overtime. By making sure that the checks and balances are making them adhere to what the policy calls for. That's in writing, that's in movement between the police department and the village board. The village corporate board, which we got.
So it's still going to be other officers, correct?
No, I have this, when you sit down, when you do the schedule, I've done this, and I went to one of the conferences. My question to the first dealing with scheduling for police department. And we are not following what the contract is. And by us, by the police department, officers are moving up, minimum staffing by one or two men on every shift, that's automatically overtime every day of the week. Every day of the week, by not adhering to the contract that you all voted on. Every person else in the house didn't vote on that contract. They have not adhered to it, at least when I go back, at least for the last three or four years. So that means that you, and I told trustee Verge, you as a board wear a hat for this overtime being where it is because no one has a check and balance on it. Because they've been over, where no one's saying, hey, why are we spending like this? Why is it like that? And trustee Verge, I've got to tell you the unity meeting.
First of all, why you keep throwing my name in? I don't know. Now, I was at the unity meeting, yes, I was. I was there, and I was invited in there for financial reasons. But yes, we talked about this, but right now, I'm still trying to figure out, you know. Chief, I know that you're here to advocate for the police department. Now, we understand that the mayor hired you for a reason, okay. But we're not here to go back and forth on that issue. The issue here at hand is finance. Now, we can speculate all day long, and yes, I talked to you about it because I wanted to see some different ways of doing things. But we're not here to try to, I mean, it's all speculation. I voted the way I voted, and that's the way it is. But, you know, we can always pull money here, pull money there, put money back, put this and that. We know where it is. But to blame, and this is what I was telling the mayor, to blame everything that happened in the last three months, to blame that says the board hasn't done this, the board hasn't looked at that. Yes, we voted on the contract, that was about four years ago. Everybody here on the board wasn't here at the time, but we voted on the contract four years ago. This is prior to the administration that's in here now. But to say that, you know, that it wasn't carried out properly, or to put the blame, I'm tired of everyone throwing the blame. We're here. This is 2012, February 13th. Let's deal with now, let's try to see how we're going to move forward now, not deal in the past and what happened back then because a lot of things happened back in the past. A lot of blames can be put everywhere, happened back then. But to throw blame out now and say, okay, this is what you didn't do back then, this is what you didn't do this prior. Okay, the window's broke, let's fix it. Let's fix it and move forward with what we have to do and how we're going to deal with today. Not about how the window got broken, it shouldn't have been broken. Kid should have been on the block, should have been down street, should have been the window in the first place. It is the window, it's broke, let's fix it, let's move forward, let's go on, ask the village to move this village forward. That's what we need to do.
You know, and trustee Verge said that, and one of the biggest programs that we're working on in the project. And again, I'm not throwing blame on anybody, I'm answering trustee to that question. I'm not blaming on anyone at all. I'm telling you. I know you're wrong. And trustee, but it's a project, look it up, the vote for it, have I said? Or you can see?
No.
But I'm not suggesting blaming on any trustee here. I'm just telling you guys that there must be checks and balances. Once those checks and balances are fully placed, that I guarantee that you will see that will still have effective police services and will be to reduce the overtime when it is because there was any more. Again, like the checks and balances on how we spend the people's money. That's all the things.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to say, stop, I'm going to go in.
A couple of things I want to bring up. Number one, trustee Verge, she stated that the mayor really is a proud of all overtime. I don't know if that's the case, but I know the payroll has to be signed off on each individual department. And so, she would have to sign off on all cable, that includes overtime. So we're talking about checks and balances, and that may be something that you start having to reevaluate. I'm not sure whether that can do that, or reevaluate, reevaluate what happened. The second thing I want to look at is, we're talking about minimum staffing. And from what I hear, that's a putative effect. I know that you just said it's a putative effect. I know I submitted a request for a memo asking when this was going to happen. Had it gotten, apparently it's a putative effect. Something that you said that it's 232, 23 for afternoons and 2.
I didn't, I'm, mayor, trustee Verge, present here. I gave trustee to that just a random number. I didn't give you anything that's particular that was to this case, I just gave her a number. So I'm not saying that it's exactly a number, I'm just something that we're not adhering to the contract. My voice is loud, I'm pretty sure by the end.
What is the number of officers on the street?
I would never divulge, the number of officers that I want to figure, why would you do that? Would never do that.
Well, I mean, what's according to the contract?
We could discuss according to the contract, I would never divulge in an open meeting what our number of police staff is on the street working. Because now, devil's foot lead, let the citizens know our village, I would never do that. Now, let me go back to the trustee, mayor, if you don't mind. I have not put anything in place. As it relates to signs of overtime, when I took over overtime, I've been monitoring the overtime every pay period with the village manager, Mr. Deeter, and Mr. Mohan, to where we are and why is that way. That's how I can tell you that the numbers that trustee had given you are correct. But he also knows that those numbers are based upon money from the traffic detail that we ran for the last two months that the state has given us money back for. I'm sure because he's a very fast knowledgeable trustee. So to say that that money, that overtime money is based upon one number, that is misleading. That is misleading because we do receive that money back from the state, just like we receive the money back from the federal government for the officers that's on the cop program. That salary alone, every benefit is put back into our general fund. Am I wrong on that matter, manager?
Have we received that money?
No, no. According to what we discussed before, minimum staffing is 232. Okay? So if you look at minimum staffing, 232, that's great. For, you have eight hours for each of those shifts, that's 16 hours of police personnel on AMs, 24 hours of police personnel on afternoons, and 16 hours of police personnel on midnes. That's only a total of 56 hours. Problem with that is, you've got 17 officers and five sergeants who, according to contract, which was changed recently in the last contract negotiations. The sergeants could be included, I don't resent, because I write the contract. So you have 17 officers and five sergeants, all of which are full time. The problem with that is, even if you just have 17 officers, you just hit 17 officers. At 40 hours a week, that's 680 hours that you need to pay them at full time. When you only require, if you go on minimum staffing, if you only require 56 hours a day, and in actuality, in order to pay all 17 of your adjusted patrolmen, you need 97.14 available hours. So if we budgeted for 56 because that's what minimum staffing is, that's improper budgeting. We should be budgeting for at least 98. Because if you, and that's just, again, that's just patrolmen. If you're looking at just making sure that the full time officers that we hired have 40 hours a week, we need to budget for at least 98. So I'm curious how we do, how we figure that out. Again, the five sergeants and 40 hours a week, that's another 200. So in actuality, we've got to pay out weekly 880 hours because that's how many officers we have. Secondly, with that, from what I understand, the minimum staffing, and I don't know a lot of it, I don't do staffing for the police department. From what I understand, minimum staffing comes into play not with how many people are on the street, but with how many are considered safely we can go down to. What I understand from that as well, is if we have a minimum staffing number of three, then that means that you don't get overtime until it's less than that plus another overtime. If we have three people staffed, we don't get overtime until one person calls up. Which will allow anybody else who schedules for afternoons, or just using afternoons, to be able to put in requests to time off. So if there's six guys that we regularly schedule for orders per afternoon, and three of them get the opportunity to get off.
You do me one favor, trustee. We can have this conversation about what our minimum staffing is outside of open meetings because, again, you are putting out what we have on the street working. And I do not, I do not like doing that. If you mind, when this meeting is over, and we go into a justice back room, we can discuss it because it's, I'll explain this to you, I'll take a book from Heywood and bring out whatever you want and write it out. But we can, I do not, I do not want to discuss the staffing of the police department in an open public meeting like this when we, we have criminals. They come to meetings too sometimes, okay? And I say, anyone here is. But I don't want to discuss our police department's scheduling in an open, open meeting. I hope you can understand that. So please, do not do that. Now, if you want to ask me something else, I don't mind, but just don't ask me those questions about our staffing like that, okay? Please.
A, I think you brought up staffing. B, I didn't give you the exact number of officers because I have no idea about the street because I don't keep a schedule. And I'm sorry, I was just trying to prove a point, but I would, but again, every time I try to have an open meeting with you and have a conversation, an open meeting, you feel the need to reject, that's absolutely fine. And I will just provide another memo to the village manager and I hope that I can be responsible for that with the most insightful way of giving information. So you can feel free to not pay attention to the rest of this. But however, from what I understand for minimum staffing, it only allows more people to take off. So if more people have the opportunity to take off, and we already have two people on injured, if something else happens, that's going to allow for more overtime. So that was my point. I don't think that we're all understanding exactly how minimum staffing works because I did, and I have a fight about it. So, I've already asked for the memo about minimum staffing. I've asked how it's going to work. I've asked if it's implemented. I haven't received it. So that's not something I can speak to if I hadn't had it. I don't know how many more times I have to ask for it to get it. And lastly, you made a point about saying that nobody talks about uniform allowance. And so you and Miss Turner came in and realized it was a problem, and even though you had discussed it, that's my meeting, that's my police department, and they love the police department, and they didn't do anything about it. About 15 minutes ago, you said that you could not speak a thing, you could not divulge, because you weren't here. That's one of those things you should speak about, you should go down. It's not fair for you to speak about that because you weren't here. You were not here in unit negotiation contracts. You were not here in the back room in the executive session. Or you had certain trustees meet, in other words, talk about uniform allowance. Talk about the fact that we need to discuss overtime, and other problems that we had, other grievances. You weren't here. So it's not fair for you to say that nobody up here has discussed it. And you're right, so if we don't need to talk about minimum staffing in there, I know I expected the memo Friday, didn't get it. I guess I should get it when there's one for all of us. So we can continue this conversation, like, can you tell us something, trustee, about it? So you won't have to write it in the card, because I understand that's the one thing.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I've never received a memo from trustee Weaver at all regarding my minimum staffing, number one. Number two. Number two, I'm talking to the chair. Number two.
I'm speaking with you.
Number two. Number two. When I discussed about the uniform stuff, the uniform allowance and all that, it was in the executive session. And it was with trustee Chevaz, and trustee Myers, and trustee Haynes. And I said one thing, and I even said trustee Haynes, I believe you're a marine. You know that these guys must look right in their uniforms. In executive session, I said that. It makes no difference, I said then, even if they haven't gotten their uniform checked, and they should have gotten it. They still have to look a certain way in their uniform. That was always been my paces, I've always stood on that, and I have not wavered on saying that. I said that inside of the executive session, I first set out to meet everybody. Second, third of all, as relation to minimum staffing, I will answer every question you want. And all of those hours checked, that's the reason why we have policing and we have civilians, mayor. Because civilians don't understand the way we do scheduling policing. And you have to sit down and explain it to civilians. Even if you are elected, you have to sit down and explain how that goes. And that's what I plan to do, and that's what I've always done, is that I can show you where we are spending without checks and balances. And I would think that whatever you hire, as the police chief, the fire chief, the village manager, whoever that person would be, I would think that you would want them to have a tight eye on the dollars going out. And that's all of the things that you want. Now, if you don't want that, please, by all means, tell me that.
Mr. Mayor. I made a motion to adjourn.
No, but I spoke directly to those three.
You can give that information about minimum staffing and that, because she still hasn't given me my memo, maybe it's because she doesn't know.
They work about it. Here. I don't care.